Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, Mr. Davis, thank you. We will now call to order our evening council session for this evening. If our clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Benson. Councilmember Drew Hall III.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Santiago Romero.
Present.
Councilmember Waters.
Present.
Councilmember Whitfield Callaway.
Present.
Councilmember Young II. Council President Pro Tem James Tate. Council President Mary Sheffield.
Present.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
All right, there being a quorum, we are now in session. And we will start off with our invocation, which will be done by Reverend Renee Booker.
Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this evening community event. I pray that you would let your presence be made known as we come to discuss the concerns of the city of Detroit, Lord, the citizens of the city of Detroit, that you would even bless those that are amongst District Seven and all those that are here tonight. Have your way, in Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Amen. Any additional welcome remarks, Reverend?
Yes, just greetings. In the name of Jesus, we welcome you to the Baptist Church on behalf of our pastor, Dr. Everett N. Jennings Sr. You're at home, feel welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for opening your doors to us this evening. We truly appreciate it. And we'll move to recognition of all of the city departments that are here with us. If you are here with a city department, please stand to be recognized at this time. And we will start all the way in the back and work our way up to the front, to my left, all the way to the back.
[inaudible]
The lawn council, demolition department.
Crystal Breckin.
What's on?
GME.
Ray Bar, the trade damage authority.
Robinson, land bank.
Police Department, mayor's office.
Thank you.
Mayor Rogers, law and policy.
List more of what we give.
Willing on the field legislative policy to visit city.
All right. All right. All right, thank you to all of our city representatives. We will now move to recognition of city council members, staff who is present today. And we will start with Councilmember Callaway's staff or team that would like to be recognized.
Chief of Staff.
Peter Root, policy analyst.
All right, Councilmember Waters staff. All right. President Sheffield's staff team. All right, thank you. Councilmember Santiago Romero. And Councilmember Benson's team. Okay. Council President Pro Tem Tate's team. And Councilmember at-large Young. All right, all right, great. And then I'm going to also, of course, we have, I didn't say Member Johnson, I apologize, Councilmember Johnson's staff. All right. All right. And of course, we saved our District Seven representative last because it is his night tonight, so we will turn it over now to your and our District Seven Councilmember, Councilmember Fred Durhall.
Thank you, Madam President. And good evening to everyone. It is a pleasure to see the turnout tonight. It is a pleasure to see all of our strong warriors, as I like to say, from District Seven. Folks here who put in work every single day, who are not elected, who do not get paid to do the people's work. I work with you, I work for you, and I am honored that you are here tonight. A council member is nothing without their team. And so first, I would like to acknowledge my great team, if they could stand up so they can be acknowledged. They put in hard work every single day for our district. They take the calls, they attend all the meetings, they are handling our legislation, they are helping push our district forward. So first, I would like to acknowledge my Chief of Staff, Mr. Mark Payne. My Deputy Chief of Staff and Communications Director, Mr. Herve Leonard. I always call her my everything, Thelma is the executive everything, Thelma Brown. A new addition who came from the Citizens Research Council, very brilliant young brother, Mr. Esma Isham Osman, who is in the back right now. A couple of other members of the team that may be floating around or not here, some of them are still at community meetings. We have community meetings at District Seven that are happening right now. Ms. Yolanda Lockett, Mr. Jerry Springs, also Mr. Anthony Stafford McDonald and Ms. Ladon Davis. I have an amazing team. Everyone, welcome again to District Seven. Tonight, we hope to show you some things relative to District Seven that is indicative of progress. When I first took office here, or prior to taking office here, there was a lot of folks that said they felt forgotten, that our district was not growing or moving in a direction that is indicative of growth. We have come a very long way in one year and six months, but we got a long way to go. Even indicative, and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge when I was coming in, I saw our retirees in numbers who are here tonight. Please give it up to the retirees. One of them is near and dear to my heart, my dad, who is a city of Detroit retiree, is in the back today. So you know you are at the forefront of my mind and my policy decision. Honorable Fred Durhall Jr., who served as a state rep, is here tonight, also a city of Detroit retiree. But, thank you. But all the folks that are here tonight, again, I appreciate everything that you do. I am nothing without you. Again, you are my bosses. I serve with great colleagues that are helping push this city forward. We may not always agree on every single thing, but I can tell you, everyone at this table has a sincere heart for the residents every day. We work Monday through Sunday, multiple hours, even their teams. And so we are here to serve you, particularly here in District Seven. My office is here to serve you. We appreciate you, and it's my honor to be your council member. And with that, Madam President, I would like to show a little video, if we can, of some progress and some things that are happening in District Seven.
This is where things are happening, and my team and I cannot be prouder to serve our residents. Close to one and a half years after taking office, we have begun to see our district transform. Whether that be our new streetscapes on Dexter and Warren Avenue, to the demolition and repurposing of the former AMC site for new development, or new affordable housing being approved, we are beginning to take the steps in the right direction to rebuild our district. We are taking a multi-pronged approach, addressing housing, development, jobs, small business, and beautification. Meeting the demands of an affordable housing shortage in Detroit, we have secured a new 128-unit affordable housing project located at the former Hawthorne Suites site. We are also glad to support the Make It Home program that will allow over 200 District Seven residents who are at risk of becoming displaced to have the opportunity to become homeowners. Additionally, we have supported and voted to approve a new neighborhood enterprise zone to begin rebuilding the housing stock in Narden Park. We are working to rebuild our neighborhoods. Development is important as well. Residents desire and deserve shiny new things. Our team heard your voices about needing a recreation center for our district. We will now have two in District Seven. With two recreation centers totaling over $28.5 million of investment coming to our district, we can now provide opportunities for our residents to recreate and receive the valuable benefits of great programming. Additionally, recognizing that our infrastructure is broken, as evidenced by the flooding over the past few years, District Seven has been among the first to benefit from the Basement Backup Protection Plan and Aviation Subdivision, as well as the $75 million Far West Detroit Stormwater Improvement Project. We are repairing what's broken and building in District Seven. Getting our residents back to work is one of my top priorities. For this to happen, we need to attract new businesses and build an environment that creates jobs.
We received tons of calls from residents regarding our public transportation service. So today is a great day, as we announce a raise for some of the most dedicated public employees that we have in the city of Detroit.
This past year, my colleagues and I approved the redevelopment of the AMC site, which is slated to create hundreds of new jobs once a tenant moves into the facility. We will collaborate with Detroit At Work, DEGC, Detroit Employment Solutions Corporation, and the tenant to ensure that District Seven residents get the first opportunity to receive these jobs. This development is not enough, though. It is no secret that small businesses are not only the foundation of creating generational wealth, but they also traditionally hire people directly in the neighborhoods they surround. The number of small businesses is growing in District Seven with the help of Motor City Match. Since taking office, over 15 businesses in District Seven have received Motor City Match grants totaling $500,000 that help residents start their businesses and provide much-needed retail services and other resources to our commercial corridors. We are working to build opportunities so that when it knocks, our residents can answer. Many of the calls that our office receives involves our neighborhoods, whether it's blight, illegal dumping, or just the overall conditions of our community, ensuring that we have safe and clean neighborhoods are important. That's why our office has passed five ordinances related to auto-related businesses to stop proliferation, create standards that hold businesses accountable, ensure that our communities stay clean. In our neighborhoods, we partner with outside entities such as Waste Management to do cleanups and board up abandoned homes. We also work very closely with the General Services Department to ensure that our parks are upgraded, maintained, and are a place where families can enjoy themselves. Additionally, the blight is disappearing from our district slowly but surely. Since taking office, we have worked with Lawine Council of our demolition department to tear down 458 residential properties and nine commercial buildings. The most recent structure is the old Redmond Middle School, which sat for years and endangered our residents. However, as we tear down, we must rebuild. That is why we are excited about the Joe Louis Greenway, which primarily runs through District Seven for over two miles, providing green space that is pleasing to the eyes, accessible to residents, and environmentally friendly. Beautification is important to rebuilding the hope for our city. And as someone has said before, beauty awakens the soul to act. Bringing home resources is the most important job of someone elected. That's why we work to put money into programs that will directly benefit residents this past budget season. Whether that be $2 million that we secured in conjunction with Member Waters to help our seniors and disabled residents make upgrades to their homes, over $1.4 million designated across various departments to assist our disabled residents, funding to create a program to reimburse residents and community groups for city lots that they maintain themselves, or funding to increase the number of bus shelters throughout our city. We are putting our money where our mouth is. I would be remiss if I didn't mention public safety. Nothing is more important to residents than their safety. As a co-chair of the Gun Violence Task Force alongside Council President and President Pro Tem, we are working to take the necessary steps to stop violence in our community. Within the next few months, our task force will release a report outlining our work and accomplishments. To highlight some of the achievements that have already come from our work is the Shot Stoppers Program. With strong recommendations from members of the task force, collaboration with Deputy Mayor Beddison, and the support of my colleagues, we have created a $10 million grant program available to community violence intervention groups focused on stopping the shootings. As stated by our chief of police many times, we cannot simply arrest our way out of violence. There are deeper rooted issues and other factors that contribute to the violence in our community, and we are not taking the traditional approach to solving this problem. I look forward to continuing these efforts to make our streets safer. Finally, our office takes service very seriously. I will never forget the words of District Seven residents who stated how forgotten and ignored they felt. My office has made an intentional effort to ensure that we respond and resolve issues and cases involving our residents. Since taking office, we have received over 362 constituent cases and resolved over 226 cases, with the remaining cases either being sent to the necessary city departments or currently being worked on. We have also ensured that our presence in our district is known. My team or I attend every block, club, community, or association meeting to ensure we are coming directly to residents to hear their concerns. We also hold regular monthly events such as our virtual community meetings, coffee hours, policy sessions, and informational sessions. We realize coming together to share ideas is important. This past year, we hosted our inaugural Community Leaders Conference, where over 100 community leaders and 20 organizations were in attendance. We also recognize that our residents have needs and that giving back is important. That is why we hosted our inaugural turkey giveaway, where we distributed over 100 turkeys to families, a laptop giveaway for the children in our district, where we distributed over 50 laptops, and our first D7 Christmas bazaar and party for residents. All of these accomplishments are great, but the job is not finished. Our work is not done. My team and I are here for you and will continue to be every day so we can improve your lives, our district, and our city. Let's get this done.
Thank you, Madam President. And tonight, I would be remiss, first, let me give a shout out to, again, our Communications Director, Herve Leonard, who helped put together that video. Just highlighting some of the things, it's hard to, I didn't want to keep you guys here all night, but it is hard to highlight everything that we are working on. Again, I have a dedicated team that stays up until the wee hours of the night, and I am forever grateful for them. But as you've seen in the video, and something struck a chord with me a couple weeks ago when Member Callaway was speaking about children in the city of Detroit, and that's why you see those last two pictures involving our children. We've got to do more for our kids here, not just in District Seven, but our entire city. And so tonight, we wanted to take the opportunity to honor some of the great children of District Seven. A couple weeks ago, I had the honor of going over to Noble Elementary. They have a really great program over there. We were building, with the children there, garbage cans for the neighborhoods, wooden garbage cans to stop folks from illegal dumping or just throwing their trash on the street. And we're getting them involved and serviced at an early age. I know a lot about that, obviously, from where I come from, so I understand the importance of it. But tonight, we wanted to honor some special children from Noble Elementary, I'm sorry, Noble Middle School, pardon me, who, or Noble Elementary, sorry, who are great and are just achieving at great, great, great limbs. I want to give a shout out to Dr. Norwood, who is running an excellent curriculum and program over there at Noble Elementary. Right off of Fullerton Avenue, kids who are from that neighborhood in District Seven, they are getting real opportunities over there. They spend tons of time with the kids inside the school, but they also spend time with kids outside the school, which is equally as important. I think sometimes we forget that children come home, and sometimes they don't have some of the same advantages that many others have. So that extra support, those wraparound services are important, and the work they do is amazing. So thank you, Dr. Norwood. But did want to recognize some students from Noble Elementary. I first would like to recognize Ms. Talila Johnson, who is a 3.857, who has a 3.857 GPA. If you could please come up here. Herve, if you could help as well. She has an unwavering commitment to her education. She's earned a 3.857 GPA. Her exceptional performance is a testament to her ability to overcome challenges and consistently set the bar high for herself and her peers. We applaud her tonight. I would also like to recognize Ms. Anaya Sims, who also has a 3.857 GPA. She's consistently demonstrated, yep, clap it up for her. She has consistently demonstrated a strong work ethic and determination to excel in her studies. Her GPA is a reflection of her efforts and how she has invested in her education and commitment to success. We are proud of her. Next, I will honor Mr. Troy Ward with a 3.71 GPA. Who has showed the same determination in pursuit of his academic excellence. Ms. Eljani Ellis, who has a 3.714 GPA. We are especially proud of her achievements. And I hope I pronounced this last name right. If I don't, apologies. Ms. Zabia Wayana.
Zabaya.
Zabaya, pardon me. Thank you, mother. Thank you, ma. Mama is gonna make sure you get it right. She has an outstanding 3.714 GPA, and her commitments and her dedication to her studies are unwavering for her academic excellence. We are truly proud to recognize all of these students from Noble Elementary tonight. Their achievements are a testament to break down barriers and inspire others to strive for greatness as they continue on their educational journey. We have no doubt that they will continue to excel and reach even greater heights. Congratulations on your achievement. And Madam President, if I could just pause really quickly so we can take a picture, I don't know if my colleagues would like to join with these students of Noble Elementary, but I'd be honored if my colleagues do, so we can recognize these outstanding students here in District Seven.
All right, you will join here. [applause] All right. Again, let's give it up for our young people. Councilmember Durhall, are you, and we again thank Councilmember Durhall for his presentation and for the work that he does in District Seven, his team. Let's give him a round of applause again. And we will now move to our, Mr. Michael Craig has a presentation. Is he with us this evening? Okay, if he can come up. And then we're also going to cut off our public comment as well. Michael Craig can come up now at this time for a special presentation.
Madam President, if I may, if I, if I can, pardon me, we have, actually, I neglected to recognize Drew Elementary, which was on the agenda as well.
Okay.
And they are here tonight as well. If I can, the Drew Horticulture Program, I don't know if many have heard of this, and their gardens are coordinated by Mr. Michael Craig, who aims to provide all students with resources and programs to master horticulture, skills to planting, managing, I'm sorry, consuming and selling vegetables and flowers right here in District Seven. Tailored to student-specific disabilities or interactive, I'm sorry, methods, they are enabling maximum involvement and skill development, making us a national model for special education in horticulture science. Their mission focuses on helping each student achieve functional independence and job readiness in food production, consumption, and sales. Their program has received numerous accolades for its outstanding contributions to education in the community. Among the most prestigious awards that they have received are the Sodexo Foundation, National School Boards Association, 2021 Grand Prize, Magna Award, and the SETSAE Foundation, Michigan Association of School Boards, 2021 Educational Excellence Award, excuse me. Their program has also been recognized with the Bosch 2020 to 2021 Best Teacher Grant Program reviewer, Donors Choice 2021, Teacher Leadership Program, Teacher Advocate, and the Garden Club of Michigan 2020/2021 Community Award. Furthermore, the program has been honored with the Michigan Public Health Week Partnership 2020 Hometown Health Hero Award winner, the Michigan Department of Education 2019 to 2020 Michigan Regional Teacher of the Year, and the Michigan Department of Education 2019 Innovative Education Corps. That is a mouthful. They have been honored. And all these awards have showcased their exceptional impact on the Drew Horticulture Program and its students, and our community as well. I had the opportunity to visit. If you have not, please go over to Drew Elementary and see what's going on over there. If you go over there, we had dinner there one night that was prepared from the garden that they are building over there. We talk about urban farming here in Detroit. They are starting at a young age, particularly with horticulture, and it was just amazing. So I have to honor them tonight as well. We have some awards for them. If they could please, if he could please say a couple words and let folks know about that program and what our great students in District Seven are doing.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate all the kind words. First of all, let me clear up a little thing. The Drew Transition Center is a center-based special education school, where we work with young adults aged 18 to 26, and we hope to develop vocational skills where we can help them find a fuller part-time job at the age of 26, or have some kind of functional independence so they can live on their own. Our horticulture program started roughly 12 years ago when I got together with our principal, Robert Ebenezen, and our executive director of the Austin School of Nutrition, and we decided to try to combat the incidence of early onset diabetes and childhood obesity through the school lunch program. So we started growing food for the school lunch program, and eventually, we branched out to now we're serving two five-star restaurants, Chartreuse and Friya, as our restaurant clients, as well as the Detroit Salsa Company, through food that's grown on Drew, on the corner of Chicago, Wyoming. If you've ever driven by Drew, you'll know, you'll see all the greenhouses in the back there. We are, we are the largest farm-to-school program in the country, right here in Detroit. So through the work of our teachers at Drew, not only through our school horticulture program that I run, but we have a woodworking program, we have a laundry department, we have a work-based learning program. So we're trying to find skills for all of our students to figure out where they fit in society and in the job market, and then we'll try to place them in those positions so that they can be fully introduced in our community. So that's the goal of us at Drew, and I'm proud of our horticulture program. I started it 13 years ago from scratch, where I just had an idea, and I slowly built it through the corporate support and support of the community members, to now we are known as the producer of the finest greens you'll see anywhere. Thank you very much for the honor.
And Madam President, I believe we have some awards for them. Very quickly, particularly Mr. Michael Craig, who we will present this award to for his outstanding achievement and pushing that program forward. And we also have some for, I believe, the faculty coming at a later date. So thank you so very much.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
[applause]
Thank you. And Madam President, I believe we have some awards for them. Very quickly, particularly Mr. Michael Craig, who we will present this award to for his outstanding achievement and pushing that program forward. And we also have some for, I believe, the faculty coming at a later date. So thank you so very much.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
[applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you. [applause] Thank you.
These are residents who have called in advance, and they will have four minutes for public comment. And we will start with Michael Cunningham. Is he virtual?
Mr. Cunningham is online, and I have unmuted him.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Cunningham.
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, City Council and all those under the sound of my voice. 313-444-9114, 313-444-9114, 313-444-9114, and on Facebook, Forest Subservants Cunningham. So what I've been asking you all to do is to ride the coaches after 6:00 PM and on the weekend, and don't be afraid to talk to the people next to you that ride on a daily basis. They probably going to give you an earful, but that's cool. They're good experiences and they're bad experiences. D dot drivers still...
Mr. Cunningham, we show your mic is muted. Please unmute.
Mr. Cunningham, still showing muted.
Fast. And it doesn't seem like, I think like the urgency has fallen off, and you know, the bonus that was given for timeliness, people being on time to work and et cetera, it was tied to their attendance, and that seems to be making some improvement. But when you lose drivers, everything that you improve, you know, falls apart because the drivers are leaving. It's urgent. I'm out here from east to west, north to south.
Mr. Cunningham, is he muted again?
I show him as muted again.
We paused his time. Mr. Cunningham, you are muted.
They just muted me. What's going on?
Okay, I don't, we're not muting you, Mr. Cunningham, but we stopped your clock. Go ahead, you can continue.
At any rate, I still give out bus tickets to those at the bus stops, and people know me, they come up to me, and they talk about their experiences with the bus system, and I try to encourage them to come to the meeting on their own, as you see me do. But they feel like you guys are bike. But I always say that City Council, they're there to help, and sometimes they need to hear it from different voices and different demographics. This upcoming Thursday is the Detroit Department of Transportation Input Meeting. The link is, of course, on their Facebook page. You have to spell the whole word out. Detroit Department of Transportation. Again, Detroit Department of Transportation, Facebook, and the information and the link and all that will be provided. It is this Thursday at 5:00 PM. Hopefully, City Council staffers, interns, or whoever will attend. I've seen Honorable Councilmember Young, Johnson, Durhal, Mr. Springs, pretty much majority of Council Presidents Sheffield, send their people to that input meeting. So hopefully, you will attend, or if you heard anybody in your life who has issues with the bus service, this is the perfect time. Please continue to keep me in prayer. We all have our stresses in life, but we got to keep it moving. So I'm asking for, I believe in the power of prayer, especially from Minister Pastor Sheffield, Mary Sheffield, please continue to pray for me. And I pray for you guys.
All right.
What did she say?
Nothing at all, Mr. Cunningham. I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep praying for you. Amen. Are you finished, Mr. Cunningham? You still have 34 seconds left. Go right ahead.
And so she's always been a prayer warrior, and I know that her staffer, my mother, was sick and was about to die. A staffer of hers reached out to me, and I'll never forget that from way back when. I don't know if she's still around on her staff, but I do appreciate that, and I appreciate the entire council being concerned about public transportation and the sense of urgency from the mayor's office and City Council. It needs to continue. Thank you so much for your time and humor in my comments.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Cunningham. We appreciate you. Joanne Warwick will be our next caller, and she is online. Ms. Warwick?
Yes, good evening. May I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah. Well, first of all, I'd like to give a shout out to the students of Noble and Drew Elementary Schools. I just think that's awesome about working on horticulture and also litter boxes, waste boxes, to try and get the young people and the adults to stop littering that would really help clean up the city a lot. I'd also like to give a shout out to the residents of District Seven because you have a Citizen Advisory Council that was formed through the Detroit City Charter. We have one in District Four and also in District Five. And so these people are elected officials with, I believe it's a youth and an elder member appointed, and their role is to help the residents out and bring issues to the council if they have them. And so I hope and pray that this council will give all the Citizen Advisory Councils or CACs the respect they deserve and as elected officials and as members who want to help people solve matters. There are residents in my neighborhood, as I will bring up again, who are not too happy about a development that got planned by two handfuls of people who signed non-disclosure agreements, and then it got rolled out upon us, and then a planning study came. We should have a planning study first so everybody gets to participate. Otherwise, it's not a very welcoming feeling, and it wasn't feeling great for the people who've been here for a long time either. It's created an enormous amount of unnecessary tension, and being on the Disabilities Task Force, Mr. Durhal, it's not good for people's mental health. So I hope that, you know, we can sit down and work something out here that works out for all residents instead of have some feel like they didn't matter at all and have some being forced upon them. And so I'm grateful that we have these Citizen Advisory Councils, and I hope that all of the members of the City Council will take them to heart and take the concern of the residents who reach out to the CACs to work with the council and take those into concern so that we can build in harmony and not discord. And also importantly, to plant a lot of green space for youth to have. That's, that's a big concern of mine, especially with this big development is a rental complex that, and we have a park here that's very busy, and if we bring all these people in, the park's going to get small real quick. So we've got to be thinking about the children in all of these developments, not just the short term and the long term. And so go, the children at Drew and Noble, and you don't have to have the highest grades to be successful because intelligence comes in many, many forms. Harriet Tubman, one of my favorite American heroes, she couldn't read or write, but she was a military genius, and she was honored by the Queen of England for her work in the Civil War. So whatever you do, just keep on doing it, and...
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Warwick. And we will now move to Mr. William Davis.
Hello. I'm going to be speaking on two issues. First, I'm going to start about, in my capacity as President, Detroit Chapter National Action Network. As some of you may or may not know, Detroit NAM has a digital equity tour. We started in District Two, then we went to District Three, and then we came to District Seven. The next one is going to be Tuesday, May 23rd. In fact, if you look at it, we basically follow the City Council evening community meeting schedule, you know, so we could piggyback on that, you know, because we don't have money, you know, we have to do what we can. Anyway, our digital equity tour, we happen to sign people up for the affordability connectivity program. That's part of Biden's Build Back Better. We have a major problem. We've seen that in the city of Detroit during the pandemic. You know, we had a number of young people and old people that found that they need internet. They need to be able to communicate. And some of our kids, because of the lack of proper internet availability, sometimes because of cars, sometimes because you might have multiple people in a household trying to use their phone when they needed advice, you know, we have a lot of problems, you know. So Detroit NAM is going to be at Church 180 at 1366 Stansberry Avenue, Detroit, Michigan, on Tuesday, May 23rd, from 12:00 PM to 3:30. Because one of the things the NAM does also as we do this, you know, we travel around and we register people to vote every day, every year. You know, we want to get the numbers up. In fact, y'all should want us to get the numbers up. That would make it more difficult to recall y'all and to recall the mayor. Okay? But, you know, we, we working on doing, making Detroit better. If y'all help, Detroit could get better sooner. So my next thing I want to talk about, the Detroit retirees. You know, we're coming up on the 10th anniversary of the filing of the Detroit bankruptcy. That was July 18th, 2013. Case number 13-53846. I know many of y'all may not recognize it, many of y'all may not know, and some of y'all may not care, but we have been hurting. We continue to hurt. Just since 2018, over 1,054 city Detroit retirees have died. You know, y'all have received a number, you know, like I say, since the time this mayor's been in office, he's received a number of pay increases. And he's a millionaire, and he getting pay increases. But yet, you know, not one penny has been returned to the city of Detroit retirees. Not one penny.
Not one.
You know, that's shameful. I mean, shameful, shameful, shameful. Y'all should be embarrassed, you know, how bad the city of Detroit retirees have been treated and continue to be treated, especially this annuity clawback. You know, money that should be going to my sons and my grandchildren is, you know, is being carved out of our paychecks every month. We know we are giving back to help support the pension system, you know, and not only that, but, you know, they are charging us 6.75%. You know, it's like, you know, you have a house, you know, you buy a house for $250,000, but by the time you get finished paying for it, you're going to spend $400,000. That's not right. You know, if anything, if anything y'all could do, and that mayor, who may not even live in the city, but anything y'all could do to help us, y'all need to, you know, especially starting with the clawback. You know, we are hurting, we need help, and we are demanding help, you know. You know, we've been patient. Our patience is ending. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis. I am going to allow Member Durhal, who wants to respond. Member Durhal?
Thank you, Madam President. If I may, Mr. Davis, you know, first, we appreciate your service, former Board of Police Commissioner. We appreciate that, and your advocacy for retirees. I told you, that's near and dear to my heart. That's my family. My dad served under one of the greatest mayors we have, the Honorable Coman Young, and so that is near and dear to my heart. He gets a pension too. So it is always on my mind, a little bit tougher than you are, obviously, but what I will say is, is that we've already put that as a line item in the Budget Finance and Audit Standing Committee, which I chair. We plan to bring back a discussion for that. There were some questions that you sent to our office to get some opinions on of what we can do relative, under the bankruptcy and even with ARPA funding. And so we're starting to get a lot of that information back, and we will notify you soon as we set the discussion so we can have that in the Budget Finance and Audit Standing Committee. So I appreciate your advocacy.
Yeah, we anxiously look forward to that.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, Deborah. All right.
Greetings to everyone, and my name is Deborah Mayfield. My maiden name, my, my former married name is Gilbo, but to note, just give you a few things. I am a mother of three daughters and a grandmother of five. I'm a very strong prayer warrior, a very Christ-centered person, a chaplain and things like that, but why I'm here, and I hope I'm in good company because I hear prayer warriors, I hear prayer, and that's what I do. But I was a legal secretary, former legal secretary for the City of Detroit Law Department from 2003 until I was unjustly fired in April 30th, 2019. So filed the grievance, filed this, filed that, and had been petitioning for the back pay, front pay, compensation that the city owes me. And I, you know, I empathize with everybody who's owed money, but I feel like I'm in limbo because I can't even file for my retirement, my pension, because it's not correct. They fired me two times unjustly because I'm one of those people, I guess, I don't know. I, I try to respect everybody, do my work, and I, Peter Rhodes knows that. And so, so, so I've been kind, I've been patient, I've been seeking my justice, all through the channels of professionalism and respect. Now I'm getting angry like everybody else, and, and because I'm a prayer warrior, you know, I'm taking it to the Lord, of course, but this is what I'm saying now because I'm angry because I didn't get a response back from you, Ms. Sheffield, when I asked, I didn't get a response back from Ms. Annivee Calvert when I sent emails. I haven't been getting responses, so now this is what I'm going to do in the name of Jesus. I'm going to say that you, none of you will get reelected in the name of Jesus until I, we all get our right money. Until I get my right money, you won't be getting raises because Jesus hears me and answers my prayer. You will not be getting reelected because Jesus hears me and answers my prayer. Unless I hear from somebody, unless I get my money, none of y'all will be reelected, and you're not going to get any raises. One time...
Ms. Deborah, that is your time.
...wanted to lay me off, and I say it in the name of Jesus, you're not laying me off. They didn't lay me off. They fired myself and gave my job back.
Ms. Deborah? Ms. Deborah? Okay.
You're not going to get your job next time. I just got a free girl, and you suck, because I'm going to ask them to move all of y'all out until I get my...
We'll take a recess until Ms. Walker is done.
And everybody, I'm sick of y'all.
All right. All right. Thank, okay. Ms. Walker, if, if, Ms. Walker, we're not going to allow you to continue to yell and, and disrupt the meeting. We, Ms. Deborah, if you do not stop, unfortunately, we will have to escort you out, Ms. Deborah.
Don't be moved out of here.
Ms. Deborah, you had your opportunity to speak if you want to continue. All right. Ms. Deborah? Ms. Walk...
Amen. Amen. All of y'all, go.
Ms. Deborah, we have to conduct a council meeting, and we would like to move forward, please, at this time. If you cannot be quiet, we will have to have you escorted out. Don Riley?
Good afternoon, Madam President, Councilmembers. I'm proud to be here today at your meeting. Let me state my position. I'm Don Riley. I'm also the Vice President of the District Seven Community Advisory Board. I'm on my second term in that position, and I'm also the President and CEO of We Care, a community organization in District Seven. My concern, one, I'd like to thank Councilman Durhal for intervening in an assault incident I had last month. He helped me get in contact with the proper authority at the Second Precinct, and I very much appreciate that. But again, my main concern that I've been back and forth with you last year was about the former park name change from Belton, Belton March Twain, that's been named that for over 30 years I've been in the community. I just recently brought it to my attention last month that the park was initially sold or reallocated to the Islam Center for $90,000 was paid, actually, that's a payment for a city park. $90,000, I was informed by the district manager last week, Tuesday, for after four months of constantly phone calls... a city park. $90,000, I was informed by the district manager last week, Tuesday, where after four months of constantly phone calls, emails, tour, she finally called me back Tuesday and want to apologize for not returning my phone call. Then we got to the condition of the park that I've been battling seven years, ever since the park got tore apart by the Recreation Department to be rebuilt. Kept telling me there was no money allocated to rebuild the park. Then all of a sudden, money became available to rebuild the park, and that was in conjunction with the Islam Center from a news media extent by the district manager telling them, all they needed was 500 seniors in the community to get control of the park. I protested and said, that's not going to happen, because you ain't got 500 individuals going to give you control of the park. Well, there was a statement about some monies concerned. Well, now I come to find out the park's been not.
All right, sir. Thank you, that is your time. I think for sure you were mentioning a park in District 7, so Member Durhal, go ahead, right ahead, let me respond.
Thank you, Madam President. First, let me say, Mr. Riley, I love you and I appreciate you. Thank you for your service. Also, neglectively, we were going to wait to the end, but now we can do it now to acknowledge all of our CAC members here who are in attendance. I know Mr. Riley is the Vice President. If you're a CAC member, please stand up. Thank you for your advocacy as well. I don't know, maybe Mr. Riley's the one here. But relative to the park and ICD, Mr. Riley, they did purchase the park. That is the process relative to, and they got the petition signatures. What I will say, I know we've been talking with their office about the name, and they are naming it Muhammad Ali, Muhammad Ali Park, who spent time here in Michigan, obviously, and one of our great black leaders. I get it, I know. But we will be happy to talk with you offline to have further discussions about that. I know that has been on your mind. I talked to my team, they talked to you yesterday, I believe, or the day before, they told me that you were talking about the park. So we will set up a meeting between the CAC and ICD as well, so you guys can have a discussion about the park.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much, Member Durhal. Russ Beland?
Good evening to all. I hope you don't cringe when I come to talk about another library story. This was, this is another bad one. Today, the Detroit Public Library Officers and a Library Commission meeting announced that the money and the program that the Library Commission approved, at least last year, I believe, for over a million dollars that was to be paid for by city ARPA funds, they, the library conducted the expenditures buying laptops. This is for closing the digital divide. So this is a program addressed to low-income families. The library spent almost a million dollars, I'm told, buying laptops, setting up hospice, and doing programming activity, and they turned the receipts over to the city, and the city, once again, this is not the first time, said they're not going to reimburse them after the library has spent the money. I gave you cases in the past, 2019, D-Brid did the same thing. We spent $350,000 on hazardous abatement. They refused to pay it. It's been misreported to you that they were waiting for the library, no, the library's been waiting for them. I brought you in January 10th about the theft of money from the library. The city has made no motion to help rectify that situation either. $4 million was allocated by your body to fix the HV system because of DTE's re-gridding of the cultural center and the impairment it put on the library. None of that money has been spent. It's been sitting in the executive branch unspent, even though you allocated it. We're at a point where this systematic abuse has to be stopped. The library cannot afford giving away a million dollars and watching another promise broken from the administration. You'll eventually be receiving a letter. The library did appeal this internally, and they were ignored.
Thank you, Mr. Beland. We are, await the information so that we can submit it and try to get some more additional information regarding the reimbursement for the ARPA. I appreciate you. Thank you, sir. Sheila Baker?
Yes, I'm here on behalf of the retirees, once again. I was here last month, and we were promised some information from our District 7 person, and we constantly hear that he hears it every day from his relatives. But the point is, we need deadlines. We need some dates, because I'm tired of coming here month after month after month, and it's been 10 years now. We need some dates and some time that you all are going to do something about our situation to bring our retirees to whole. This clawback is ridiculous. We are paying 6.7% on an interest of my annuity money that I paid for 30 years, and I've been retired now for 15, and we have not received one dime for 10 years for our pension, and cost of living is going sky high. We do have a meeting with our retirees once a month, and we've been doing this for 10 years, once a month at a church. If anyone is interested in coming, it's every first Wednesday, it will be June 7th next month, and the address is 8850 Woodward. It's St. Matthew, St. Joseph's Church. If anyone is interested in coming to join us and talk to us, come to our meetings and help us, and give us some dates, give us some due dates. Timeline, you said it's on, you know, your agenda, but we have no, no time to look at that you all constantly keep saying that you're doing something. I see nothing being done. We need cost of living. My cost of living every July 1st was like $63.20. We want it back. You know, it's my money. We want our money back. I mean, I know the city can do something. I'm sick of hearing about everybody else getting a raise, and our people are dying, you all are not having to pay anything back with them, so please help the ones that are here struggling, trying to do better for the city of Detroit, because we fought real hard. I came every day to work, and I need you all to work for me now.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you and your service.
Thank you, Madam President. And so let me tell you, as far as the deadline, first, I get it, and I understand, and no one is blowing you off in that sense, and I understand why you are passionate. And I can tell you, everybody at this table has had discussions on what can we do. But we are honest as well, and there are processes that we have to go through, so relative to that information that we requested, so we can have that discussion in the Budget Finance and Audit Subcommittee, we are the legislative branch. That comes from the executive branch. And so I don't control when those responses come back in. And I don't just say that to say that, but again, that's near and dear to my heart to let you know how serious I am about the issue. And so once that date comes in where we have all the information, because I am not a subpar legislator, I'm not going to give you half of the information, we want to make sure we have a robust discussion where you can get all of the information, so everyone at this table can develop solutions, then we will bring that and we will send you that information. But I am not a liar, so I don't want to give you a false deadline for something that is not going to happen that I am not in control of relative to the information that I need to receive. And so I get it, and I am, I am with you. You worked for many years. You worked so we can still be here. I get it. No, I get it. I get it. And that's why I mention my own father. I get it. And so as soon as we can develop, get that information that we need, so we can find out what we can do within the law that we can do from this table.
Excuse me, excuse me. We have to, we have to keep a level of decorum for our meetings, you all, please. We're listening to everyone, we just want to have the same respect. No problem. We understand your passion. Member Durhal?
Yeah, no, no, we, no, we do, we do. And, and again, we want to do the best that we can, but we got to have all the information, and that's what we're striving to do. So as soon as that date comes, I know it will be an interesting meeting. I know Mr. Davis had a house packed, and we are looking, and we are looking forward to that. I stay in constant communication with him, whether he has told you or not, he has shown me what other cities and municipalities have done relative with similar situations with ARPA funding, or cities who have emerged from bankruptcy relative to the retirees, and we're looking for ways that we can help them. So I know you don't want to hear about the time, but please try to give us some time so we can work through it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Theo, Theo Broton?
Thank you. Happy Tuesday, Council, and happy Tuesday, community. Again, my name is Theo Broton. I'm co-founder of Hood Research and President of Barton McFarlane Neighborhood Association. Thank, thank you, sir. What I want to say first is the city council is being asked, I'm told, by the state for money for Belle Isle. I resent that. I resent it because they are charging people to go on the island, charging for the gazebos or sheds, as some people call them, charging for the giant slide, I'm told that the bathroom isn't even open by the giant slide, where the largest population goes, and charging for the museum. The Auditor General for the City of Detroit should be asked to look into that. What on the hell are they doing with the money that they're receiving, that they have to turn around and ask us for money when our neighborhoods are not being serviced in the manner in which they should be? The last thing I want to talk about has to do with radiation. Radiation, it's been reported recently that 29 public schools have cell phone towers next to them, on the top of them. Radiation comes by degrees. We don't know how much is going to affect our children. They wouldn't catch cancer the day after they went to school and went home. Five years, 10 years, 15 years. By that time, nobody would even connect it with the cell phone towers that are on top of our schools and next to our schools. They came in like the Trojan horse and all kind of gifts and things. This is going to be so wonderful, and you'll always be able to use your cell phone. Well, that's crap. Then they want to turn around and say that $1,000 will go to the school for the needs that you have. Have a friend who was offered $4,000 a month. He turned it down. The other issue as it relates to this, I was told early that the senior residents have cell phone towers on their apartment buildings. You should check into that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Broton. We appreciate you, and can tell you that both of those issues, I know that Belle Isle came before, it's for the annual report, and we are still looking into some of the presentation that was presented regarding bathrooms, et cetera, and so we will keep you posted on that. And I also know that Member Waters did sponsor a resolution. I'm not sure if you want to mention that, Member Waters, regarding the cell phone towers? Not necessarily?
I'm not sure if this, oh, it works, okay. All right, so, so yes, Madam President, we should be taking the resolution up next week, and I'll explain things a little bit further then. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Member Waters. Linda Love-Layley?
Good evening. I am a city of Detroit retiree. City of Detroit retiree. I worked 34 years for the, 34 years for the Finance Department, and I reiterate what my fellow retirees have said, we are hurting, we need help, whatever you can do. We know you can't undo the plan of adjustment, but try, help us do something. 10 years, no raise, everything is going up. Water, electric, gas, grocery, you name it, everything but our paycheck. We need help. My household was hit twice. My husband also retired from the city. So we, double whammy. We need help, whatever you can do, we would appreciate it. And another thing, overpayment of property tax. 10 years, we overpaid property tax. City said they can't do anything to help us get anything back on our property tax. How about just reducing what we're paying in the years coming? That's, that's a thought. So we're getting, we're just getting hit in every direction. Property tax, pension, you name it, we're being kicked. It's like, you all just donated your service to us for 34 years. Now, for 10 years, we've been sitting here hurting, hurting. If it wasn't for Social Security last year, at least we got something there. Help us any way you can. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. Corinne?
Hello, I am not a retiree. My husband is. He worked for the city for over 30 years. I heard you say that you understand. No, you don't understand anything. We have this money taken away from us every month. Whether we want to or not, it comes directly out of the pensions. Oh, is Kwame paying back his restitution? Is anybody else paying back the restitution? That should be in the higher departments? No. But of course, we have to have ours taken out of our, our check every month. Now what happens if yous had to take away part of your salary every month? Would yous like it? No. Would yous be able to live with it? I bet none of yous could live with having your money taken away from you. We have to adjust our living arrangements because we are losing money. Cost of living goes up, everything goes up, but yous keep taking our money away. And plus, we have to pay interest on it. If my husband dies tomorrow, I still have to pay that money back. Is that fair? Would you want your wife to pay money back because you died and they took it out in their error, it was not our error? You wouldn't like it, and you wouldn't like it. If you died, your husband would have to pay it back. None of yous would like that, but we have to. It was not our choice, it was not our error. They went to work, they did their job, and now we're getting punished for it.
All right, thank you. Cecily McLennan?
The bankruptcy was done on the backs of the retirees of the city of Detroit. It was a little over $7 billion, and almost $4.5 billion was from the healthcare alone. I understand, because I was forced to retire at 60, and I had to pay almost $500 a month for healthcare until Medicare. And now you have some people out here that they don't get very much more than $500 a month in their pension, and they're paying it full amount. Some people have to go back to work so they can just, they'll use their pension to pay for their healthcare. We are suffering tremendously. We need this council to look at some creative ways of trying to recoup these dollars. Are there funds at a state level that could be used to supplement the pension? Are you making sure that in 2024, that that pension protection plan is funded fully, at 100%, and that we don't have to worry about the city of Detroit ever coming to revisit the pensioners? Because we do know, based on the plan of adjustment, that is a great possibility. The clawback is totally unfair, the way it was done, it was unfair. It allowed people to vote on 15.5% of your pension being taken away from you, even though it wasn't going to happen to them. There were so many things done within that pension process that was totally unfair. We understand that you have to, to open up the plan of adjustment would be a very difficult task, but there are so many things that you all could consider doing on a whole lot of levels that may help take some of the pain away. You know, we have billionaires coming here asking for tax abatements. We have billionaires coming here and asking for tax captures. And often, this council, and many of you, are voting for those tax captures. You got to look at, is there any way that there could be funds that could be given back to the city of, I mean, to the city retirees?
All right, thank you so much.
Good evening, Council. My name is Shirley Manis. I'm a retiree as well. I retired from Employment and Training Department. I worked with Coleman Young, and I came in during that administration. I worked with Mr. Durhal. So you all know, we were 4,000 targeted between that 2003, 2013. We were targeted. We came in under that Coleman Young administration, and they came after that group of us. And so we are just, we are just tired. We know you're tired too of hearing this, but we have nobody else to come to. We don't have advocates, million-dollar attorneys to speak on our behalf. So we have to come and share our plight with you in hopes that you Create a group so that we can be a part of it and raise this. The waiver can be done. But there needs to be an attorney that will say, "We need a waiver. Help these people. Stop that money coming out. We are in poverty." And it doesn't need to be this way. When I retired, I had to keep working. I've worked every year since I retired because I can't make ends meet. One other thing that I just wanted to say to you, we are the backbone. You're standing on our shoulders. Whenever you need more city makeover, whenever you need community beautification, you come to us in the retirees, the seniors stand with you. So stand with us. Elevate this. Give us a timeline. We are here, and we will work with you to help get this elevated so that we can stop this bleed and stop the hurt for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to a timeline soon.
All right. Thank you so much.
My name is Pastor Charles Winfield. And I'm a friend of Mary Waters from a long time ago. Mary Sheffield, you've been to my church. Letitia, you helped me with a tree on Corville. So I've been here a long time. I've been paying taxes probably longer than some of you were born, you know? And I worked 25 years for the city of Detroit. I was only off two months in 25 years because I had a hernia. Other than that, I went to work every day. And I feel like I'm being slighted. They took my healthcare, and they take 300 a month from me. You know, I have no recourse, no recourse. Most of the retirees had to take other jobs to make ends meet. We're not beating you guys down, but you're the only voice that will listen to us. Everybody else, I believe that he blacked out, even the news media, because they won't even respond when we talk about retirees and things like that. All I'll say, I'm not going to let you beat me, but just help us. And anybody in here running for mayor, please put your name in the ring today.
My name is James Winfield, and I'm also a retiree. 30 long years. 30 years I gave my life to the city of Detroit and the community. I worked up from a garbage man, I worked to a code officer, and left, retired from D-Dot. And let me tell you something. Never did I have a disciplinary action. I came and done the work for the people. But all we're asking, we know collaboration works together in government. I mean, talk to the mayor, a Democrat mayor. Talk to... We got a Democrat AG, a Democrat governor. If it's time for us to be made whole, it is time now. It's time now. Enough is enough. We have paid a price. Listen, when I retired seven years ago, and I worked on all the mayors, Mayor Young, all the way to Duggan. And let me tell you, we took concession after concession. Money after money we lost out of our pockets. We have families to support. But let me tell you, for seven years, I had to pay my healthcare. When I needed the promise that the city gave me when I retired, I would have healthcare. But no, they snatched it from me. My dental care, when I needed, when I needed eye care, it was gone. I mean, come on, enough is enough now. We understand what you guys said. But look, you put a bug in the mayor's ear. Look, we need to take this further, on up to Lansing, and make the right, make it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Michael Garth. I'm also a city employee. And Ms. Mary Sheffield, that's my girl, that's my daughter friend, you know what I'm saying? The thing is, you know, I got hired for the city of Detroit in 1982. And I got, I was working for a motor company. Ford Motor Company called me back to work in 1984, right? And so like, the old timers told me, say, "Mike, you stay with the city because the city is going to take good care of you. They're going to take good care of you." Said, "When you retire, you have it going on." So I ended up retiring. I retired in 2008. 15 years ago, 15 years ago, I had a 13th check. And I said, "Oh, baby, look at here, we got a check for Christmas." All of a sudden, that just stopped. Okay? That just stopped. My thing is, like this here, man, when you retire, you got to reap your benefits. I worked all these years to retire so I can sit down and go on vacation, enjoy my life. But what I had to do, go get me a job at Lowe's. You know, my benefits set up. And like, you know, we'd like to say, we not hollered at you guys. We want y'all to help us. We want y'all to be our voice. We need you. We can't do nothing else. We can't get in no trouble. I sure ain't looking for no job no more. I'm just all to work. Because I'm not, I want to be the boss. And then they're not going to hire no bosses. I want, all I want, two vacations a year. I want the first vacation to be in January and end in June. And next to start in January and June and end in December, well, I won't pay. Now give me a job with two vacations a year, and I come to work with pay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
How y'all doing?
Good, thank you.
I'm a retiree too, from the War Department. And I retired in 2010. And I know some council members two, three times. And every time we come with a problem, y'all say, "Y'all going legal, this and that." But how long is it going to take for y'all to help us? You know? And my thing is this, we need to get with Mr. Davis. For the council members that can't help us, get with Mr. Davis. And the retirees need to go in all districts that the council ain't helping us and get them out of office. Thank you.
All right. Is Calvin Colbert here? Calvin Colbert?
Yes.
Okay. I think he's coming up. And then Wallace Cross, you will be next, followed by Gwendolyn Jones.
All righty. Sorry for my delay, but I am here now. Oh, yeah. I'm one of the voices of District 7. I represent the Detroit Impact Center, a community youth center located right here in District 7. Been here for 30 years. And you know, tonight, I hear the energy, and I hear all the voices that empower us in what we're about at Detroit Impact. You know, and the voices and the energy I've heard in the room tonight, we need a breakthrough. We need a breakthrough. Part of our breakthrough is preparing the next generation to be empowered to make a difference. Changemakers in this world today. So I just want to come up and say, for the work that's being done in Cody Brewer's community, the Action Alliance Committee, for the work they're doing at Detroit Impact, for all of the work that's being done in District 7 to prepare our young people for a future in the new Detroit. For Detroit is happening all around us, is calling on our young people to become leaders. I heard it said, "Enough is enough." I heard it said, "I don't need to work no more." So let's prepare the next generation who's going to take what we're doing. And I'm going to say, as an example, this council that is sitting before us tonight, there's an empowerment, you asking them to do what you want them to do. But we got to be able to have a voice. That's what I would like to represent tonight, the voice of all the young people in this community who are going to lock arms with you in making this community a better place. I love the energy. I love the message. We want to be a part of positive change. Detroit Impact Center works for you from 5:00 to 17:00. Our summer camp is coming up. I got some cars I bet are supposed to be passing out, coming up. Violence prevention, shoot with cameras, not with guns.
All right. Thank you so much, sir.
10 years ago, I was told by the city that I was paid over $36,000 too much in my annuity. 10 years now, they done took $30,000 out, and my balance is $42,000 today. I remember when the city was ran by Italians. Italians was getting a nice annuity check when they retired. Then after that, when the Polish got in there, they started getting a nice annuity check. Then all of a sudden, when the blacks get in there, now somebody say, "Hey, something wrong. We got to do something about this. This here was intentional." I'm just begging y'all, because I'm telling you something, they've been taking this out. Now, I done paid $30,000, but you had to owe $42,000. They say they going to take this out for the next 28 years. And that's the only way. I'm going to give it to them, you know? But I'm telling you, this here is unfair to us. This is unfair to us. Your father, Coleman Young, I used to always say one thing about your father, he cared about the seniors. He built, he made sure when he built the senior citizen home, he made sure the seniors was taken care of. When he built homes and that, he made that it was affordable for us that lived in the city. Now here I am, I'm a senior, and now being a senior, I'm struggling. We need y'all to start being, we need more of the Mary Mahaffries. We need more Erma Hendersons. We need no Kwame Canyadas. So we need y'all, and we need y'all to fight for us, even, that's a law, but there's some way y'all had to do something. You can't sit back and have us the ones that put you in the office, but then when we get in there, we have a mayor that don't care nothing about us. Coleman Young loved the city, and he loves the people. And if a man don't love the city or love the people in it, he ain't going to do nothing for them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Gwendolyn Jones? Arthur Edge, followed by, behind Gwendolyn Jones.
Hello. My name is Gwendolyn Jones, and I'm the secretary of the Hayden Street Block Club. And I, I, it's beautiful, everything, all the reconstruction and everything that's going on. I'm so glad to see that. I also want to say, I'm in solidarity with the retirees from the city of Detroit because they shouldn't be treated that way. But the reason I came here is to stress car radio patrol. Okay? And I'm sure many Detroit residents want our neighborhoods to look beautiful. Is there any way the city council can appropriate funds to the police department for additional NPOs to just patrol the neighborhood blocks in conjunction with the neighborhood car patrol to reinforce city ordinances? Is there any way the city council can help promote the necessity of calling for volunteers for car patrol, maybe offering a monthly stipend other than pennies on the gas mileage? We need over 200 volunteers to promote safety throughout the city of Detroit. And I believe this would be a good start to try something different. It would be willing, I would be willing to help with this project, and I would like a response. And anyone interested in volunteering for the car radio patrol can contact Myra Gracy with the police department. Her contact number is 313-316-4616. So I think that this radio patrol through the neighborhoods will also beautify the city. Because we're tired of our city looking like it does. And if we enforce the ordinances, that will do it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. One second before you leave, Member Durhal wants to respond to you.
First, I want to say, Mrs. Jones, you know, I love you. Thank you for everything.
I love you too, Councilman Durhal.
I hate, I hate the street. What I will say is, Myra, first of all, Myra Gracy is amazing. Obviously, we turn her over to other community associations and block clubs when they're trying to start their radio patrols up.
Right.
One of the things that we talked about in our community leaders conference was that ARPA funded. We had $347,000.
Okay.
$20,000 available to community groups that could apply for this grant. And one of the focuses, when I decided on what we would focus on in District 7, was public safety. So those dollars can go to those community organizations so they can start radio patrols within their area. But I look forward to working with you. You know the team. I don't even have to give you the number. You know, Don, everybody else.
Right, I know. I know. And I would like for this to be...
But let's sit in, let's sit and talk about that.
Okay, great.
So when we look forward to even, you know, maybe ARPA reprogramming of dollars or whatnot, maybe that is something that we can look into.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Arthur Edge?
Good evening. Thank you, Council, for allowing me to speak. I am Arthur Edge, also a retiree, but I'm not here to speak on that tonight. I spoke to you all just a little over a year ago about the fairness of the demolition program. And you have contractors out there that's been out there for over two years trying to get in a demolition program. They are asking them to tear down garages. And they have aid license, which if the Renaissance was up for demolition, they had the ability to tear that down. That's like asking you, as council members, to only be council over a block until you can prove yourself in order to be a council of your district. That is unfair. I ride through the city every day, and I still see the blight, the demolition, and even emergency demolers that are still standing out there. So why can't these contractors be able to come aboard to make this city better, to clean up this blight? And I'm quite sure everyone on this council has properties in their district that are still standing that need to be tore down. So we need more contractors to move forward and make it more easier for these contractors to come aboard for our great city. And I'm quite sure everyone in this room has some place near them, next to them, in their block, or in their community that they're looking at every day that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Could you stand with me for 15 seconds, sir? Could you stand with me for 15 seconds, sir? What you said was appropriate. Now y'all can start my time. These are criminals in the K-Mac. This is how this has been done. B.C. is responsible. 1741 Ferry Park, you know that structure. Does it need to be demolished? In any way, shape, or form, is it a blight, hazard, nuisance in the city of Detroit? Does it need to be tore down? The only, it's only open to trespass on the third floor. You got to have a 30-foot ladder to trespass in that building. Am I correct, sir?
Well, being fair to you, sir, I worked that department. And at that time, the owner of the building didn't do what he needed to do at that time. So that's why it's on the demolition list. And he needs to move forward and to defer it from the demolition...
Now, the deferral process, we put in for a deferral application, I'm under the, I'm under the understanding that David Bell is not going to approve it until we meet certain criterias. Now, that's totally egregious. First of all, it's a totally sound structure. You should not be using ARPA money to destroy a building of that nature. I'm talking to you, Scott Benson. Oh, he gone again, huh? Andrew Winfield Callaway, you a lawyer. Those bonds, what Miller-Campfield bond attorney said was it true? Revenue bonds, MTF bonds require notice. Now putting public notice and seven newsstands for 500,000 voters here in the city of Detroit is totally egregious. Residents in the city of Detroit, we going to have to come downtown one day, 100,000 of us, blacks. And petitions, get rid of all these criminals in the K-Mac. They on the 13th floor, the 11th floor, the 5th floor, and the 4th floor. Mary Sheffield, you cannot censor me. I am who I am, and you don't have the support you think you got in District 5. Neither do you. Neither do you, Callaway, or you, James Tate. Y'all just ain't got it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. All right, that will, yes?
I'm not calling you criminals. It's a process, it's a journey, has to go through.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. All right, that's going to end all of the in-person public comments, and I think we have a few that have joined us online.
Madam President, our first caller is Betty A. Varner.
All right, Ms. Varner. Good evening. under the understanding that David Bell is not going to approve it until we meet certain criterias. Now, that's totally egregious. First of all, it's a totally sound structure. You should not be using ARPA money to destroy a building of that nature. I'm talking to you, Scott Benson. Oh, he gone again, huh? Andrew Winfield Callaway, you a lawyer. Those bonds, what Miller Campfield Bond Attorney said, was it true? Revenue bonds, MTF bonds require notice. Now putting public notice and seven newsstands for 500,000 voters here in the city of Detroit is totally egregious. Residents in the city of Detroit, we going to have to come downtown one day, 100,000 of us, blacks. And sign petitions, get rid of all these criminals in the K-Mac. They on the 13th floor, the 11th floor, the fifth floor, and the fourth floor. Mary Sheffield, you cannot censor me. I am who I am, and you don't have the support you think you got in District Five, neither do you, neither do you, Callaway, or you, James Tate. Y'all just ain't got it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. All right, that will, yes. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. All right, that's going to end all of the in-person public comments, and I think we have a few that have joined us online.
Madam President, our first caller is Betty A. Varner.
All right. Ms. Varner, good evening.
Good evening to all. I want to say that I'm president of the Soddy Ellsworth Black Association, AKA Diva. I am so proud of the work that Councilmember Durhal, my council member, and his team are doing throughout District Seven. He, since he has been elected, he has made a difference. I am very, very appreciative of the support he has given to my block club. But I am looking forward to the day or evening when my council member will do a presentation that will include my neighborhood, the Finkel Livinoy's area. My block club, we are a group, the majority of us are seniors who have lived in our neighborhood, some of us in our homes for over 50 years. We are committed, and we are making a difference doing all that we can do, even with our health challenges. Looking forward to a project being on Finkel, between Finkel and Livinoy's and Finkel and Wyoming. I am proud of all the work that the team is doing. I'm proud of that team because we're doing the work along with our council member. So I will be much prouder when the Finkel Livinoy's area to Finkel and Wyoming is included in one of your presentations. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Varner.
The next caller is Cynthia Jackson.
Okay. Cynthia Jackson.
Ms. Jackson, please unmute.
All right, let's come right back to Ms. Jackson.
The next caller ends in 181.
Good evening, caller 181. Good evening.
We show that caller 181 just went back on mute. Please unmute to speak.
Good evening, caller 181. Still muted? Okay.
Okay.
There we go.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are. Ms. Dara.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
This is, okay. Anyway, I was going to talk about something else, but I was a retiree, and one of the mistakes, and I want people to get this stuff straight and then start getting the figures because nobody's ever, let's look at the real figures, and year by year and everything. There's a difference between the pension system and the annuity. The annuity was a voluntary thing. You could give up to 7% of your pay, and I did that, starting in '86 because Dave Farrell told me about it. And I went right, signed up and kept in that because it was, that $10,000 that I put in grew to be 100, over 100,000. And that was partly, I went to a police commission meeting, they took me in, and I said, "Go over there and they'll show you what you're going to get." Well, they were paying too much bonuses out. The point is that they would go back to city council and combine the two things and say, "We need to support the pension system." The pension system was fine, but they were abusing it through the annuity by giving out more money than they were taking in the annuity. And that's what I found out by having this policeman go over. Said, "Yeah, see, see the bonuses? They gave you so much bonus. We were guaranteed 7 and 8, something, 7.9% every year." And I asked the president of the union, he said, "That was a guarantee." He said, "The reason is that we get, we take that off first before anything." So it wasn't done in a way that was legitimate bookkeeping, but the council should never be fooled, but they benefited, see, because they were in the annuity. They might not get 10 years to qualify to retire, but they, they can put 7% of their pay and wind up with a big, big amount later.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cindy Dara.
We will move forward to Mr. Williams.
Okay.
Mr. Williams, I show that you're muted. Please unmute to speak.
Hello?
Yes, good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I can, I can barely hear you. I've got one food for thought and one concern. The food for thought is that many of the people that are on the, on Zoom, you couldn't hear them, okay? So I would suggest that you guys maybe test this, these audio systems out before you get on. You can hear people on the phone very, really well, but in the meetings, they, you know, they don't come across at all. Some weren't heard. The concern that I have is I'd like to see that these huge tax abatement programs are maybe better vetted, not by just the city of Detroit, but these external companies and these audit people that are experienced with it to see what we need to get, if we can get more for the cities, for the citizens of Detroit, because in the future, they're costing us in the future. These programs should be critiqued, audited, and then reported on at some period, at some future period, okay, to see how well we did, what we learned from them, what we can do better the next time. So I'd like to see some of that, you know, some of that done, and I think we could have some better results because it hits the bottom line for a lot of the expenses for the city of Detroit. Thank you very much for taking my question, concern.
All right. Thank you.
And the last caller that raised their hand before a public comment was cut off is Cynthia Jackson.
Good evening, Ms. Jackson.
I'm showing that she's still muted.
All right, Ms. Jackson, going once, going twice, and just please submit your comments to the clerk's office, and we will make sure that it is a part of public record. All right? And that will conclude our public comments for this evening. Again, we thank you all for taking the time to come out. Councilmember Durhal, we thank you as well for hosting us to the church. Thank you for opening your doors to us this evening. And to all of our retirees, I know that we all are committed to continuing to work towards a solution. Thank you all for your advocacy and your work on raising this issue and looking forward to work with each and every one of you all. All right? With that being said, everyone be safe, have a blessed night, and this meeting will stand adjourned.